We will call the village board meeting to order. I would ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Trusty Gus.
Here.
Trusty Johnson.
Also here.
Trusty Miller.
Here.
Trusty Addison.
Here.
Trusty Sidik is absent. Trusty Wells.
Here.
Attorney. A revel. I had it. Mayor Hucker.
I call him Carlos. Mayor Hucker's here.
Attorney Carlos.
If you would all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I proudly introduce the flag of the United States of America into a republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up, we have public comment on agenda items. This is the first of two opportunities the public has to address the board. Second opportunity would be for any and all topics that's towards the end of the agenda. If there's anyone who wishes to address the board on any agenda items, I ask you just come to the podium, give us your name and state your case. Seeing none, we will move on then to the consent agenda. This consent agenda includes the following items. The approval of the village board regular meeting minutes from December 8th, 2022. Bills presented for payment amount of $412,323. The public safety and the monthly finance reports from November 2022. Do we have a motion? Oh, excuse me, do we have anything that the board would wish to consider separately? There being none, do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Gus, second by trustee Miller, to approve the consent agenda, any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Trusty Gus.
Aye.
Trusty Johnson.
Aye.
Trusty Miller.
Aye.
Trusty Addison.
Aye.
Trusty Wells.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, mayor's report. I just wanted to take the opportunity to say happy 2023, haven't seen y'all since last year. So, good to see the smiling faces. I understand trustee Sidik has an issue that she's having to deal with tonight, health related, so I will wish her the best. And move on to trustee reports. First up, we've got finance committee trustee Johnson.
Thank you, mayor. Really nothing to report tonight. The items that we just approved in the omnibus agenda will be reviewed at our next, the warrant list at least will be reviewed at our next finance committee meeting, which will be held on the 29th of this month. That's all I have to report.
Thank you. Next up, parks and recreation trustee Gus, what you got?
I'm happy to announce we're going to have our first function of this year, finally. After pandemic and all of that, it's going to be a luck of the Irish luncheon, March 17th at Illinois Beach Hotel, Nola's Restaurant. And we got, they're going to have meat includes corned beef, lemon pepper cod, and baked salmon. And tickets are on sale now, and you just got to stop by the office and get them. And that ends my report.
Sounds great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Planning building zoning committee trustee Wells.
Thank you, honor. I have one item for your consideration. Petition to file for an application for a variance which would allow for a fence that is taller than the permitted side yard adjacent to a street. Plan commission held a public hearing on the variance request. We recommended approval for the variance condition upon maintenance of the fence while it is installed, and you have a draft of the approved, the ordinance approving the petition for your consideration, and I'd like to entertain in the formal motion.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Gus. Discussion.
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
I see that there was never a permit applied for with this variance, is that correct?
You know, to be honest, trustee Miller, I don't recall if a permit was applied for or not. The issue was identified and then the owner was notified of the fence height issue, and they were issued notifications, but I'm sorry, I don't remember if a permit was applied for or not.
Okay, and you know, I guess I'm wondering why this particular decision was made to add a height extension to the existing fence versus any other options. And first of all, you did a very nice job with your application. Congratulate you on that, it made a lot of sense and it was very easy to read. But you know, I had, my first reaction was there were other options that might have been considered versus tacking a two-foot extension onto a corner.
Could I ask you, please, if, just for the sake, we do record and broadcast meetings, so if you wouldn't mind, come to the podium and identify yourself, thank you.
My name is Cindy Summers, and in answer to your question, we did look at other options, but the cost was prohibitive because in order to satisfy the fence, I guess you would call it, the ordinance, we would have had to move our fence in, into our yard 10 feet, and then we could have a six-foot fence. And right along that line, that 10-foot line, there's, we have two trees that we would have had to have moved, and then we also have a big bush. And, you know, we would have had to cut down the trees and we'd lose all that section of our yard that's on the side yard. And there's, it just didn't seem like it was necessary because there's plenty of space there between our fence and the road, you know, there's a ditch and even extra yard there on the outside of the fence, so.
What about an option like a GPS collar?
Oh, oh, you mean like an electric?
Or a dog run.
A dog run?
That could have been built inside the existing fence, you know, that would have had the six-foot height.
Yeah. Oh, well, we would have had to even lose more of our yard that way. And as far as the electric fence goes, they don't work necessarily. I mean, we were just walking our dog the other day down the street where one of our neighbors has an electric fence, and the dog still just ran right through it.
Yeah, I was mentioning the GPS collar, I think that's one of the newer things that doesn't require any wires underground. The collar is something that I think even people use for hunting dogs now, and it program it, and it sets a perimeter within the collar so that the dog can't go beyond that boundary without the necessity of putting wires underground. So, just a couple of things that I thought could have accomplished this.
I'm not aware of the collar that you're talking about.
Yeah, it's called a halo.
It's still, got to give them some deterrent.
Right.
Because they don't know how to read a GPS, you know, I mean.
Well, no, no, but there's, there's methods that go into that that have to do with training to, of course, training the animal not to try to jump the fence, so.
Yeah, well, once again, you know, when you're training a dog, you know, they're going to not, it's going to take them a time to learn. And, you know, I don't know, I know you walk around our neighborhood a lot and notice, you know, there's a lot of children on bicycles and people that are walking their dogs, and, you know, we didn't want to take any chances with a dog scaring somebody to the, you know, to the point that they fall off their bike, or the two dogs get into a fight with each other or something, so. We wanted something that we were going to make sure wasn't going to be any kind of a safety issue to anybody that's walking down the street.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I had a question.
Yes.
I know with condition use permits, they are non-transferable typically, and they sunset, and there are no such provisions here, so if, if we approve this thing, is that in perpetuity? I'm looking at our, at our temporary council. Or is there a way, I know dogs have a finite, much shorter than most of us, hopefully, lifespan, and, and of course, we don't, none of us, we're all, we all have expiration date too, so these houses change ownership. So, the question is, is that something that could be engineered into this, into this or not?
I think you could put a sunset based on the ownership of the property. Certainly, you could include a condition into the language of it that would specify that. I would not necessarily do a life of the particular dog in question because I'm assuming
No, that would be too hard to track.
Folks may keep having dogs.
But if it were not transferable to another owner, for instance.
Right, right, and I think that.
Or have a sunset of three years, five years, whatever.
Right, the only way that that would happen is if you were putting in something that would run with the land, so if it doesn't specify that that's the case, and then at the same time, you put in some sort of condition that expires upon the ownership of these folks.
The document we have in front of us now is a zoning variance.
Right, I understand that.
And that, and that's in perpetuity, is it not?
What does that mean, that word that you use? Means forever?
Forever.
Forever.
Forever and ever.
That it just follows.
Perpetual.
Right. And part of that has to do with the fact that if you're creating a structure, certainly that structure may have a permanence to it, and you don't want for, you don't want to tie in the life of the variance to any one particular condition of that nature.
Well, and I'd envision renewing it, just as, just to bring it back to, not, not impose any more costs on these folks, but.
Right, right.
To bring it back on some frequency to verify, yeah, you still need it, or it's, you know, you got cats now, you don't.
I think that, that, that would become problematic because then you, you would then have.
I know it's.
Periodic, and then it may not necessarily be something that, that you could have any rhyme of reason, so, so certainly, if you have this particular board and the board was in agreement, they extended the variance, but then you put some kind of limitation on it and its life, or the length of it, then you could have a different board that may want to reduce that, and so then that would potentially create a hardship on the folks.
Right.
Who have built and proved the property consistent with that, with the variance that has been granted. And so then you're creating a hardship for them that.
Yeah, I'm not looking to do that. I'm, I'm, I'm looking to do something analogous to the condition use permit where you continue to renew it until the, the use is no longer.
Or the ownership changes.
Or the ownership changes.
Right, and I suppose that you could put that kind of term in it, but I would not necessarily, but, but again, that would remain with the ownership so long as the ownership was what it was, fine, but then you also have to consider, and I go back to the fact that there are structures or improvements that will be built based upon what the variance is doing.
Well, in this case, of course, they were built before, before the application, so that's kind of moot here.
But, but, but again, there's a, there is an improvement that is being made or has been made, and now it's being adjusted to it. If you were to create those kinds of conditions that would then limit it, if the fence were to be replaced, could you then say, well, no, you can't, you know, that kind of thing? So that's, that's kind of the issue, you want to create, it's, it's, it's a hardship, it's fairness to the property owner to understand what conditions they can develop the land.
And I'm not looking to impose a hardship.
Or how it will remain.
Yeah, I'm not looking to impose any hardships here, I'm looking to, to just establish a sunset, if you will, if one's no longer needed, or if the property changes ownership.
Right, but, but again, the question is, if the new, let's say that the current owners were to sell it, right, and the new owner would want to keep the fence, would then, would that mean, based on what you're saying, that the new owner would have to come in and go through the same process for something that's, when they're buying it and they.
I would think so, yeah, and we do those with continue, contingent.
Conditional.
Conditional, thank you.
That you have that.
Conditional uses, if the property sold, that, that, that permission is gone, and would have to be replied for.
Something to consider, you can certainly, you know, propose some language that would allow for a similar process of that nature, to have the current ownership be able to maintain the variance and up to that.
Yeah, I'd be on board of that, maybe I'm way out of the box here, I don't know what, what the fellow board members' sentiments would be, maybe we can do a strong.
And I believe you can discuss that, and as part of the process as you consider the approval.
Trying to draw some parallels here, we frequently have, variances are typically setbacks, bulk, lot size, height of a fence, and we have granted several variations over the years for fence heights, not this type of a situation, but typically unimproved right of way down the side of the property, and, you know, if someone wants to have a six-foot stockade fence, well, the ordinance reads, you know, that's technically road product, even though there's no road there. So we have several variations out there, variances that have been granted, thinking about garage size, things like that, that it's the same tool that's.
You don't want sunset that.
Yeah, it would be impractical, obviously, but fence height is, is one that is exactly this, and we've never put any kind of a condition or sunset on a, on a variance.
No, I appreciate it, although this is.
This is.
Very unique in my experience, and it's, it's not, it's not integral to the fence, but it's an addition on to the fence.
Correct. And, you know, when, when the time comes where the wood fence needs maintenance and replacement and all of that, this will be coming back up again in the sense that they'll have to accommodate that into this design somehow.
And I'm sensitive to the, to the fact that this is, there are some, as well identified in the hearing, they're 20 feet off the road, it's a wide right of way, it's a corner lot, so they've got two rights away to deal with, so I get all that.
Yeah.
And again, I'm not looking to impose a hardship, it's just, if this is necessary for this dog at this time, so be it, but is it necessary for all eternity?
Any other comments from the board on this topic?
Well, I, the variance that they're, that we're being asked to approve is simply a zero-foot setback from the property line with a six-foot fence. That's what we're doing, I mean, obviously, it's already constructed. In my opinion, it looks a little bit like a zoo enclosure rather than a six-foot fence would look. I would have preferred for the variance to just be, let us put a six-foot wooden fence up and not do the setback, because I understand you don't want to cut a tree down or whatever, but I believe there was mention of your wellhead. The reason the setback is there on corner lots usually is for sightlines, you're blocking a sightline from the person at the stop line to be able to see. Well, that's not the case where you are, you know, I visited, and I sat at the stop lane, the six-foot fence wouldn't be blocking anybody's sightline.
That was what our understanding was, was because it was a sightline, and that's one of the reasons why we chose the option that we did.
Something you can see through and stuff.
Right, you can see through it, and then, not only that, but when we, we rescued this dog, so we got him, he was already big when we got him, and we had had another similarly sized dog, and he never was able to jump over the fence, but the first night we got him, first day we got him home, he jumped over that fence like it was nothing.
Surprise.
So, you know, one of the things that, with a dog-proof fence that we added to our fence, it does curve inward, which discourages the dog from even trying, trying to get over, so.
No, I understand, I think it's a unique circumstance, and, and since there is no sightlines, I don't see a problem with it being where it is.
Yeah, but that, I was just saying, that was one of the reasons why we chose that option.
You could just feed him a little more.
Yeah, I used to be able to jump.
Just one more comment about the permit. We didn't know that we needed a permit because we weren't building anything, we were just installing something that we bought online.
But you knew there was a four-foot restriction.
Actually, well, yeah, I guess we knew that there was a four-foot restriction.
Right.
We didn't think about it at the time, we had to do something fast, you know, because when we saw that dog jump over the fence, we were shocked, we weren't prepared for it, and this was just a really quick and easy way to get it done. And the least expensive.
Well, it's up to the board to, if there's a desire to, to consider an amendment to this variance, there certainly, we have the ability to do that, I just, I'm concerned about the complications of, you know, this wouldn't go down as a deed restriction, so there's nothing that would automatically trigger if the property was sold, that it would be automatically flagged that something had to happen, so 15 years from now, when there's a whole different host of people around, you know, I think it probably ought to stand or fail on its merits as it sits today, and, you know, that's what.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't, this just came out of the blue here, I don't know what the mechanics of it would be.
Yeah, and I just want to make one more comment, I'm a little concerned about a precedent that we might be setting for future corner lots with dogs that jump fences.
Well, I, I will say that nothing is, nothing in this changes the zoning ordinances with regards to fencing, so it would not automatically grant anyone the right to do what's done here. Someone may point to this in a future zoning variance application and say, I want to do what they did, but that would be about as close to a precedent that I can imagine. Every, every zoning variance stands and fails on its merits, so.
Okay.
One thing I would like to comment is that I do believe that this fence alteration and extension would require a permit, we just make sure that they, if they're necessary permits, if they're applicable in the situation, which I do believe.
Okay, so, in addition to the zoning variance that.
Record should, our record should reflect the alteration.
Yeah, and the, the reason for, for permits obviously go into structural soundness and, and all the rest of that, you know, that it's safe and it's not going to collapse or whatever, fall or rot away or whatever. Well, I need to clarify the, the permit question, I guess, as to where the status is of that, as staff to act accordingly.
Well, if I may, yeah, I, I see in the document here that the, that the, the petition, the fee for petitioning for the variance was $850, which is a lot more than probably than any permit or, or fine that we levy for, for that. So, you know, again, I, I dislike the fact that this is after the fact, but I think it would be salt in the wound to charge some additional fee on top of this, so I'd recommend waiving fees, maybe you're going to go through the process, but waive the fee.
Well, as to the motion on the floor, is there any other discussion? Then I would ask for the clerk to please call the roll.
Trusty Gus.
Aye.
Trusty Johnson.
Aye.
Trusty Miller.
Nay.
Trusty Addison.
Aye.
Trusty Wells.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, variance is granted. I will leave it in staff's hands for inspections, whatever else needs to, should happen.
Yeah, mayor, if I could, we just put it on hold because, you know, there was the two resolutions, it comes down or.
Right.
We go through the variance process, so we'll continue on and correct our records to reflect.
Fair enough. All right, anything else? Thank you very much. Moving on to public relations, intergovernmental committee, trustee Miller.
Yeah, nothing tonight, you're right.
All right, then. Next up, we've got public safety committee trustee Sidik, she is absent, but we do have an ordinance amending the, get to it here, adjudication process revision. Basically, this is a revision to the ordinance and to the ticket to notify individuals of adjudication date and time, is that correct? Just a.
Yeah, just to make the process more efficient, it's, we currently were required to send out both the citation notices that it got to that point, as well as a letter, certified letter, so we're notifying, and, you know, there's timing issues associated with that on both ends, so we're just trying to make it for more efficient if people know of the opportunity to come to adjudication that's identified early in the process to, if it gets to that point.
All right, and I do see there's a sample of the changes to the ticket form as well, so I'd ask, do we have a motion to approve?
Go move, second.
Huge. Well, I guess I'll go with Miller and Gus, in that order. This is ordinance 202302, an ordinance amended chapter 2.43 of title two of the Village Beach Park Illinois Code by revising the process for code violations. Any discussion?
I have a question, will this form, is this form going to be used by our code enforcement as well as if, when sheriff's office issues bill or ticket?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's, that's the only question I have.
Yes, and yes. All right, have the discussion. Roll call, please.
Trusty Johnson.
Aye.
Aye.
Trusty Addison.
Aye.
Trusty Wells.
Aye.
Trusty Gus.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Moving on to public works, trustee Addison.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple items as far as the report goes, I'm happy to announce that we were scheduled to have a committee meeting last night, but everything is going so well, and there is a lack of the four-letter word.
Yeah.
So far, season, we didn't really have anything to talk about, so we canceled the meeting and we're holding it all up until February. So I see that as a good thing.
Excellent.
Adrian, for having everything running so well that we didn't even have to meet. But besides that, the first item that we have here is related to a vacating of an unimproved right of way, it's been requested by the adjacent homeowner, the unimproved right of way is on Bayonne Avenue, and it's adjacent to 12990 Clarendon Road. We discussed this at a previous committee meeting and agreed that vacating this right of way will not have adverse effects on a throughway to be constructed at a later date, there's no, no anticipation of putting a road of improving that right of way. So pending the payment that is calculated by the, the size of the right of way and the, the assessor's office formula that they use, the payment would be $4,476.55. So that's, I guess, part of my motion. The motion would be to approve an ordinance vacating the unimproved right of way of Pickford Avenue adjacent to 12990 Clarendon pending filing of the paperwork and payment, aforementioned payment, does that make sense?
Yes. Do we have a motion?
Bayonne, not Pickford.
Sorry?
Bayonne, not Pickford.
Oh, it says Pickford right here, I've even got it highlighted.
On what?
But this, did I get a special one so I could?
Yes, you did.
All of them, under the motion line, it says.
I apologize, yes, that is.
It does say Pickford in the motion line, you're correct.
So I said nice things about Adrian, and here you have a special one with a typo in it just for reading in front of everybody. So I will say the right of way of Bayonne Avenue adjacent to 12990 Clarendon pending the others.
Okay, Scribner strikes again.
Yeah, you got me, I even highlighted it.
All right, then do we have a second?
Second.
Nope.
I'm not even going to try, these two are so quick.
That would be.
She wouldn't do it.
That was made by trustee Addison. It's been a month, it's, we're rusty.
Yeah, we are.
All right, any discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Trusty Miller.
Aye.
Trusty Addison.
Aye.
Trusty Wells.
Aye.
Trusty Gus.
Aye.
Trusty Johnson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
So this was a good order to have these in because we just passed an ordinance that's going to make us $4,000 if they choose to follow through, which will soften the blow of the next item that I would like to, to bring up. As you may or may not know, we have a radio reading system for our water meters, and it's not been as long as we had hoped since we installed the radio reads, but we were informed by the company that sold us that equipment that they will no longer be supporting the system, and it's being phased out, so we were forced with having to look at other options. We did have three companies that we looked at proposals, and the, the best one is with Ferguson Waterworks of DeKalb, Illinois, so I guess the motion would be. So I guess the motion would be accepting or authorizing purchase of the water meter reading system and approximately two thousand nine hundred fifty radio transmitters from Ferguson Waterworks of DeKalb in an amount not to exceed three hundred eighty-three-thousand three hundred eighty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents.
And I'll reluctantly second that.
We have a motion by Trustee Anderson and second by Trustee Jensen. I'll add my two cents in on the disappointment side of things because I sat here and thought, well, that was just a couple of years ago.
Twelve.
Twelve.
Yeah, years ago.
Just a couple of years ago that we did that, and I assume we'll be installing the RT, the reader units, the transmitters.
We as in board members?
No.
Or village staff?
We, the collective we.
I've done it before, actually.
I know you have.
It's, anyone can be trained to do it, obviously, but no, I believe village staff...
Right, the recommendation was for village staff to do the installation.
And that's how we did it the last time, and there's certainly a...
It takes some time.
Well, it's a, it's a continuous challenge getting access, and if we have a contractor trying to do that, the end of that project gets to be really tedious because you've got the hangers-on that aren't quite available and, yeah, at least our staff is going to have access anytime, so disappointing, but we have to have it, so. Any other discussion on this?
Yeah, I'll echo that. It's very disappointing what happened was it wasn't the original seller that declined to support their software anymore, but the purchaser of that company that just decided that they weren't going to continue that product line anymore.
I'm sure they would have been happy to sell us their newer...
They, oh, they offered that, and...
But it was more expensive than this one.
Well, I tell you, after what they did to us, I'd be tempted even at a higher price to buy it from somebody else. You can't trust people like that.
Just a side note, the anticipated life expectancy is in the twenties-year range, so it gets just a tad.
Yeah, I just have a question. Adrian, did we say are people going to get notified before the village starts coming around to replace their meters, or are you going to handle that?
So most of the units are outside the homes.
Okay.
So most likely we will do some sort of notification, but individual or specific notifications, I don't foresee that unless we have to get into somebody's house inside.
Especially those that have big dog.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I guess then roll call, please.
Trustee Anderson.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Gus.
Aye.
Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, well, one benefit of maintaining a budget, it's always in the black when you have the unanticipated expenses, it's nice to have the funds in hand.
Yeah, we do have the money. We don't have to take out a loan, but...
The Tiff Committee has no report as we have not met. Move on to staff reports, looks like we've got one raffle light item.
Yes, Mayor, this is Our Lady of Humility's having their annual big raffle, and so this is the raffle license for that event. If you approve issuance of raffle license and the fee waivers they've requested, we'll notify them tomorrow and they'll start selling tickets for that, so.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the raffle license for Our Lady of Humility and waive the fee?
I'll move this time.
We have a motion by Trustee Jensen, second by Trustee Miller.
Yeah, that's close.
Discussion. All right, roll call, please.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Gus.
Aye.
Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
Trustee Butler.
Aye.
Trustee Anderson.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have no old business on the agenda, we do have one item of new business, which is we need a motion to approve the HMG engineering bills totaling twenty-three thousand seven-hundred-six dollars and ninety-seven cents. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Motion by Trustee Gus.
Second.
Second by Trustee Jensen. All the activities over here, it's almost like...
This is the amen corner over.
Oh, okay.
Well, I can't chime in on this one.
I know, you can't chime in on this one. Any discussion on the payment? Roll call, please.
Trustee Gus.
Aye.
Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Anderson.
Stain.
And Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, next up, we have citizens wishing to address the board. Same rules as before, anybody who wishes to address the board, just come to the podium, give us your names, state your case.
My name's Ronald de Verge. I've lived in Beach Park for forty-four years. I really believe that this board has forgot that this is a blue-collar community and that you guys do nothing but infringe on us as citizens' rights, constant harassment, and I would like to know if I could get a petition, I don't want to depend on this board to vote on it because I don't have any confidence in you, to get some amendments made to some of the parking issues. One of them is commercial parking, since there is twenty-three cars within Regina's neighborhood that gets, that are commercial vehicles that don't get ticketed, but mine does. Or on the street that you guys live on, there's fifteen today, there's buses, everything else in everyone's neighborhood. It's been harassment for seven years. You know, you can't, you're as ordinance, we can't even work on our own vehicles. I can't change a tire in my yard, in my driveway. We own thirty or forty different properties between our family and Beach Park and have been here our whole lives, and we're getting chased out and harassed for being working-class blue-collar people. All right? I drive a company truck, I park it in my vehicle, in my driveway, okay? We're a twenty-four-hour response company, I do heavy equipment, I'm the one that fixes all the heavy equipment for all your airports, your cities, states, villages, everything else. I own a personal truck, that is not a commercial vehicle, but you guys call it a commercial vehicle. It was in my driveway for one day and I got a hundred-dollar ticket for having it parked in my property. Secondly, I have no trespassing signs on my property. I have video footage of village employees trespassing on my neighbor's property, opening up gates with no trespassing signs, going in their backyards and, you know, going on people's properties without anybody's permission. I mean, is that legal? Are you guys allowed to trespass on private property?
I guess it would depend on the purpose. Obviously, you just heard us talking about water meters. Access to a water meter or gas meter, electric meter for the utility, which we are a water utility, is something that is granted by right of the user. So it depends on the situation. If somebody's just meandering through your property, that's...
Literally just to give a commercial vehicle parking, the gentleman next door to me had his vehicle parked, has no custom, no company labels on the side of it, it's just a one-ton truck, parked in his driveway, behind a fence, behind a gate, a six-foot fence with no trespassing signs. They parked in front of his house, they walked up, knocked on his door, seen he wasn't home, went to the side of his house, opened up his double gates, six-foot, with no trespassing signs, took pictures and gave him a ticket for seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Well, I have to look into that, I'm not aware of that, so. As far as, as far as your question about a petition, there is no mechanism per se...
So it's, so it's not a by the people, for the people, it's by you, how you want.
Well, by the, buying for the people is through the election process and your legislators. The, just like any other state, county, whatever, there's no specific petition process changed law. Not that petitions haven't been proposed or been brought to the village for certain topics to let people...
So if I get a petition with enough people and I brought it to you guys, would it be something...
It certainly would be considered, and there's, there's an ongoing review of ordinances as we go through our day-to-day business here. As we see, our zoning ordinance, for example, has been revised numerous times over the years, problems are identified, times change, things change, and then things get addressed. So it's certainly not beyond the pale that somebody would say, I think this is unfair and I would like to see it changed, that's certainly within your purview.
The problem that I have is it's not that it's unfair, it's that you guys pick and choose.
Well, and to that, and I've heard this before, and to that, I will say that there's fourteen some, fourteen some thousand residents in the village, and the number of homes, I don't know, probably five to six thousand. I know that neighborhoods, the better-traveled neighborhoods get attention. I also know that when you see something that's clearly wrong, that appears to be that way and remain that way for a long time, more than likely, if you're seeing it, we've already got them in court. I can think of one situation right now that's embarrassment to be the entrance into one of the road's entrance, entering into our village very publicly, thumbing his nose in a way that has left us no option but to drag it through the court system, and it takes forever. So the lack of action does not necessarily mean that it's being ignored in some cases. Some neighbors may get a ticket for something, never say a word about it, and pay it, and move on. Others may be in a situation where they're fighting, and it gets to be tedious and time-consuming, so.
I under, I understand what you're saying, but I mean, and I'm trying to get, you know, I've been trying to identify what you guys consider a commercial vehicle, what's not, but the biggest thing that my problem is, is that all of us that grew up here and worked here our whole lives, we are the people that built the village of Beach Park, we're the ones that support all the cities. So I mean, the electrician that has his van in his driveway, which there's thirty of us in a ten neighborhood, have vans there, the company that do the restoration companies, all these service trucks are there, those are all considered illegal parking in our own driveway at our own house. Now, I pay Waukegan taxes, I go to Waukegan school, the village does nothing for me in any way, shape, or form. I would rather be annexed back in Waukegan, at least there where we have a voice and a right. So, but I mean, what, so technically, you know, and I don't want to go out and out all these other people because I, you know, I want, I wanted to see if there's some kind of amendment we can do, and I'm not saying, hey, let's park the bus or semi, right? But I'm just saying, I mean, if it's, you know, I mean, some kind of amendment or some common ground we can come on, you know, I mean, we, you know, we work hard to build the house. The house that we bought was a foreclosure, we spent over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in permits. Every time, I mean, I went to get my stack, I've got a folder that's, you know, five inches thick. We've been doing everything we can to improve it. I bought a vacant lot next to my house because nobody would do anything, and I've had, the city has called me to help pick up my neighbors, brush and stuff when they missed it or didn't, personally called me, but I had my chipper in there and I rented equipment to do it. So I mean, I'm just trying to find a common ground where I can go to work and come home and not worry about what I have parked in my driveway. You know, I mean...
Understood, and, and I'm not, I'm not, certainly not arguing with you.
I get it.
I've been a contractor throughout my life and...
Well, I used to own the property, it's always down from you, I know exactly what you're saying, so that's why we sold.
And, and the, the, a couple of thoughts. A, if a contractor's coming home at night and parking in his driveway, code enforcement may or may not ever be out during those hours. We are largely a daytime operation. We do have parking and other enforcement that goes on after hours and weekends and things like that, but again, if you're seeing it, you know, in a summer's evening at seven o'clock, code enforcement may not be seeing the same thing you're seeing, so.
Right, well, and, and well, here's, here's, here's probably the biggest problem I have with this whole scenario, is he drove by and saw me standing next to the vehicle outside that day because I was home, and then left and came back an hour and then put the ticket on my window. Not a warning, not, hey, you know, hey, Ron, and they know me, I mean, I've been here my whole life. It's, hey, you know, you know, not a warning, not saying anything, and I literally bought the truck that day. I mean, I just bought it to plow my driveway and to plow the stuff around the neighborhood like I always do, and I mean, so I mean, it couldn't even have been a warning, you know, hey, hey, you know, this is a problem. And here's the biggest thing, you know, you guys want me to build a garage or whatever, so I bought the lot next to me, I can't fence it in till I annex it into this property. Well, why would I do that? So I mean, can I just put my gate and my fence up and quirk in my backyard? No, because it's still against the things. I mean, I just, I think we got to come with some kind of common ground where we can have our equipment and our stuff. I'm not running a business, you know, I'm not, I do it for myself.
And one thing I've gotten real clear in my years on the village board is there's something called the law of unintended consequences. At the time when commercial vehicle parking was, the ordinance was changed, was to keep the residential areas residential and the commercial areas commercial, et cetera. Excuse me. We had semis, we had dump trucks, big dump trucks.
Right, I get it.
We had school buses and you name it throughout the village. We had contractors that started with one truck and...
But there's still those contractors here, there's still semis parked.
Yep.
There's still tons of companies doing it.
Believe me, and I see...
But they're not getting tickets.
Well...
Mine is because, and because, because I'm in a neighborhood that Regina lives in.
I would challenge whether or not they're getting tickets unless you know these people personally, and maybe you do.
I do know them personally.
Yeah.
We do. Like I said, I've been here my whole life.
Yeah.
I mean, we watched, in the last ten years, we watched thirty of our family members leave because of stuff like this, you know, us owning properties where, you know, somewhere, some, you know, you guys said that it was wetlands, and then all of a sudden now there's a house built on it because it changed hands. So I mean, there's tons of stuff.
We don't, we don't regulate wetlands.
I know, I get it, I'm just saying it's just...
There's an entire county bureaucracy for that.
It's always something, no, I understand that, but, you know, I mean, there's tons of stuff, and here's the biggest thing is, we all work all the time, all right? So we depend on you guys to make the right decision for us citizens, right? So when I can't go to work and I can't park my vehicle at my house to pay my bills, to pay your guys' salary, what am I supposed to do?
Well, I don't know, I don't know how to answer that question other than to say that you've brought some good points to the fore. We've actually had a conversation, I've had a conversation with both staff and with members of the board that have suggested that we might want to revisit this and have a look at it. We have lots and lots of ordinances in the village, and like I say, some of them get stale, some of them may have merit, may not have merit on every situation, and I hear you encouraging the board to do that, and I'll certainly listen to my trustees and staff as far as if there's any other suggestions that we might be able to take into account. Contractors, as I was starting to say, frequently start with one truck, and then there's two, and then there's three, and then there's a trailer, and then there's a skid steer and an excavator, and pretty soon you've got a contracting yard in a residential neighborhood. And there's got to be a defining line between what's a residence in a residential neighborhood and what's a commercial district where contractors and other businesses can operate like that. And, you know, all I can say is we're doing on a code enforcement basis pretty well, but we're not touching probably twenty percent of the violators in the, in the village because it's a moving target. You fix this one, they, they understand, they change your behavior, and that one over there starts, and you got to, it's a continuous race to figure out. Sure, it'd be simpler to just do nothing, that's where we came from, that's what Beach Park was before it was incorporated, there was no rules here.
So, I mean, so it's like a commercial vehicle, I mean, the fire department, they have their vehicles parked at their home, that's a commercial vehicle, correct?
Well, it's a, it's a municipal vehicle.
So it's okay for the government and the village to do, break the rules, but us citizens aren't.
Well, I didn't see that.
Well, I mean, but that's...
You said that, but I didn't see that.
I'm just telling you, but that's the problem I have, because there's a fire truck that's been sitting there and it's never been ticketed ever.
Chief, do your fire trucks go home with the...
It's not yours.
I'm sorry?
It's not his, it's Lake Villa.
Oh, okay, so it's...
Four doors down from Regina's house.
Is it like a pickup truck or something?
No, I think it's an SUV.
Yeah, it is an SUV.
Okay, well, that would be permitted by our...
Passenger vehicle.
It's a passenger, it's a commercial with commercial plates with all the numbering and decals and everything else.
Yeah, but if it, if you read our ordinance, our ordinance would allow anything that would be a typical passenger vehicle, pickup truck, SUV, van, that is not marked or is, excuse me, that is marked with the, the business name or the operation's name, but shares the characteristics of residential vehicles. For example, a window van would, with a Lake Villa Fire Department on the side of it would be treated the same as a window van with, you know, passenger van. A window, or a windowless van with ladder racks on top of it and large logos and all of that would be labeled a commercial vehicle. It's not, doesn't share the characteristics. So if you read the ordinance about commercial parking and the zoning ordinance, it does identify what type of vehicles would be permissible in residential zones. That's what they're enforcing.
Okay.
So, it's not the nature, if it's a Ford Focus that says Joe's Windows on the side So, it's not the nature, if it's a Ford Focus that says Joe's Windows on the side of it, that's not considered a non-conforming commercial vehicle according to the ordinance.
I get that. There's people that have worked for the power company, the electric company, everything else that parked semis here for 25 years.
Yep.
In their driveways.
Yep.
Without any recourse or anything else.
Well, I...
I'm just trying to figure out where the common ground is.
Yeah. Well, and like I say, we're, it's something that's been...
I mean, if you do it to this person and not that person, it's harassment to that person.
Okay. Understood. Thank you for your time. Is there anyone else that would wish to address the board tonight? Sure.
Just out of curiosity, why not do it...
Could we have your name, sir?
Jeff Raveli. Why not do it per weight? That would solve a lot of your problems.
Yep, that's one option. That's what, some municipalities do it that way.
Because I had a 32,000 pound truck sitting in my driveway for many, many years in Beach Park with no hassles, but I live on a dead-end street. Nobody comes by my street. But leaving at 2:00 in the morning, a lot of them didn't like it.
Right.
But that's the way it was. But if you did it weight-wise, you wouldn't have no problems because it's whatever plated and you're done.
Right.
Whether it says a name on the side or not.
Right.